Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call this August fifteenth regular meeting of the Zion City Council for order. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Holmes?
Here.
Commissioner Fireston?
Here.
Commissioner Fisher?
Here.
Commissioner McDowell?
Here.
Mayor King.
Here. Item number three, Pledge of Allegiance. Mr. Bremer, would you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
Please drop your Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Commissioner. Pastor Corin Wong from the First Baptist Church in Wentzep Harbor is going to lead us in prayer this evening.
Good for having me tonight. Good evening. Let's get started by reading a short passage from Isaiah chapter nine. It says, "For a child will be born for us, a son will be given to us, and the government will be on his shoulders. He will be named Wonderful Counselor, Mighty God, Eternal Father, Prince of Peace. The dominion will be vast, and his prosperity will never end. He will reign on the throne of David and over his kingdom to establish and sustain it with justice and righteousness from now on forever. The zeal of the Lord argues will accomplish this." Let's go through it. Creator of heaven and earth, God, as we look forward to this new government in the future where there is no more lawlessness. Imagining a government where it lasts forever, where there's not a single lawbreaker in sight because your justice has been done forever. And in the meantime, Lord, we know that you have entrusted these individuals here, city officials, with the great responsibility of punishing lawbreakers and rewarding law-abiding citizens. On paper, it looks simple, but the execution of it is rather difficult. God, we pray that you give them guidance and wisdom, that each of these officials will display a fruit of repentance found in Christ alone, where we know that you offer forgiveness for all of us, for all the mistakes we make each and every single day. And just be with this group of individuals now as they seek to lead this community, this city, into what we can know as prosperity here on earth, knowing that we look forward to a greater prosperity that no one can even imagine. So, Lord, we pray for your blessing, Lord, this time of these conversations that take place tonight, and in Christ's name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
And if we could have just a quick moment of silence for the residents of Maui. If anyone's been following what's been going on there, I've been to Maui several times and seeing what's happened to that luscious landscape and what the people or residents are dealing with, not only there, but all through the United States with the tornadoes and floods and different weather events. If we could give a moment of silence for our fellow man. Thank you. Item number four, agenda changes. Do we have any agenda changes by any of the commissioners?
Mayor, I have two agenda changes, item eight A as well as eight B. I would ask that those items be tabled.
All right. We have a motion to table items eight A and eight B.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Fireston. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Holmes?
Aye.
Commissioner Fireston?
Aye.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Mayor King.
Aye. Motion carries. Item number five, we have citizens' comments. Mary Lou Hildebrand.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Commissioners. This was the last time last year I'd just come home from Montana and just to look at the pictures, it's awful. And to think of people having to run into the water to try to get away from the fire just breaks my heart. Good evening. During the month of July, your Asda members volunteered 119 and a half hours of service for a value to the city of $3,586.52. We assisted the police at two accident scenes and stood watch for public safety at the viaduct when it flooded during a downpour. I want to put a little aside in here, anyone who needs to travel during a really big downpour, Twenty-Ninth Street becomes impassable between Galilee and Lewis, so try to avoid that. We have a really good downpour. We performed a monthly sire test, assisted the fire department with the fire at the safety plant, and assisted with rehab for the water rescue in Wentzep Harbor. We assisted at the monthly food pantry at the New Tech parking lot. We held our monthly meeting and the annual alarm detection check at the center. We provided barricades for the cross-country race and held duty times for maintaining our vehicles, grounds, and buildings. If you want to be a positive influence in our city, go to www.cityofzion.com and from the drop-down menu, choose Apply and join our team. Thank you for your continued support.
Thank you. Mary Lou? All right. Bill Hartman?
Good evening, Mayor, Commissioners.
Good.
I'm here tonight to thank you and to the city and to the commissioners for all your support and give to the Park District. For you that don't know, I'm Bill Hartman. I'm the president of the Zion Park District, and I'm very proud to be there. I'm also on the State Committee for Accreditation, so we go around and credit all the park districts in the state of Illinois. And I will tell you, hands down, the work and relationship between the city and the Park District here is second to none. Mayor, I don't think I could ever leave one of your speeches. You have it in you. Just forward with it. And believe me, we appreciate everybody who comes to all the events. You know, this is such a great town, and I'll tell you, people should be proud to be from here, because I'll tell you right now, everywhere I go in the state, I was right about Zion. To the police chief and to the fire chief, your overwhelming support that you gave us that night at the concert was second to none. The explorers from Lake County, our Park District police, and you guys were just on top of that. And again, we greatly appreciate it. And thank you, Mayor, for giving me this time to be able to put it on the record. I've been wanting to do this for a long time, but I think that Delacane Concert just put it over the hill. And right then and there, I knew I had to come and do this. So, thank you.
Thank you very much, Bill. Appreciate it. Appreciate it. Karen Crutchfield?
The only question I have is to find out if there are any liquor licenses that are available in the city of Zion or in the business.
While we don't answer questions after, if you'll stick around after the meeting or give Cheryl Spooner, our city clerk, a call tomorrow.
Sure.
She can talk to you a little bit more about liquor licenses and the business that you're thinking of bringing in. Do you have her number?
No.
Eight-four-seven?
Okay.
Man on the minute. Eight-four-seven, seven-four-six, four-zero-one-two.
Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you for coming in.
Absolutely. Thank you.
All right. Brian Diggs?
I'm Mayor, everybody else on the board. I really don't know your names because I just moved here. I just wanted to introduce myself to you, Mayor, everybody else on the board, but the police chief and the fire chief. I'm retired military police officer, I'm retired military working out here. That means that I was K-9. That means that I showed up with the acts of violence and I committed acts of violence. I am a real live deterrent. I do all my own business in the area. I am thinking about incorporating a training facility in the area, so as I said, I just wanted to introduce myself to the council and everybody else so you can get a base with that.
All right. Well, welcome to Zion. If you have any questions or want to set up a meeting, Cheryl Spooner, not only our city clerk, but she's also my administrative assistant, and she handles my schedule in meeting with people. But welcome to town.
Welcome.
If we can be of help in getting you situated here, Phil will reach out to any of us by email or by phone call. And you can go on her city website and get all the information you need.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you.
Welcome. All right. Item number six, consent agenda.
Approval of minutes in a regular meeting held on August first, two thousand twenty-three at seven p.m.
Is there a motion to approve the minutes? So, move. Motion by Fireston?
Second.
Second by Holmes. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Holmes?
Aye.
Commissioner Fireston?
Aye.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Mayor King.
Aye. Motion carries.
Bills vouchers one-four-three-nine-one-four through one-four-four-zero-zero-seven drawn on Huntington National Bank. Total one million, seven hundred and fourteen thousand, three hundred and ninety-one dollars and sixty-seven cents.
Is there a motion to approve the bills?
I'll move to approve the bills.
Motion by Fisher?
Second.
Second by McDowell. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Holmes?
Aye.
Commissioner Fireston?
Aye.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Mayor King.
Aye. Motion carries. Five zip. Item number seven, consider passing ordinances as follows. Item seven A, adopting by reference of the Lake County Watershed Development Ordinance per Director Roberts.
Thank your honor, Mayor and Commissioner. Lake County Board adopted thirty-five amendments, including new FEMA maps to the watershed development ordinance. All communities within Lake County are required to adopt the updated WDO. Adoption of this updated ordinance will ensure the city remains in good standing with the FEMA National Program and maintain our certification status within Lake County. The amended WDO is now effective and includes the minimum county-wide standards for the regulated development. The amendment pertains to coastal high-hazard areas, wetlands, administration, floodway storage, rainfall table, and the new floodplain maps. Staff requests and recommends approval of the updated Lake County Watershed Development Ordinance. A full copy of the WDO is available within the Lake County website. There's also a link, if you go to the City of Zion website, there'll be a link for that too.
Okay. Is there a motion to adopt the runts of the Lake County Watershed Development Ordinance?
I'll make the motion.
Motion by Holmes?
Second.
And second by Fireston on a whisper. Quiet man. And an echo by Commissioner Fireston. Any questions or comments?
I did have a question. So, unfortunately, I didn't get through the complete document from the county website. So, are there any operational updates that we need to make or that you have made related to those amendments that came through?
None for us. Council members understand, we are considered, was considered, a non-certified community. Basically, we fall under the umbrella of Lake County lower. I am an enforcement officer within that, but they are the permitting agents. I do, when they request it to, I'll do reviews of prints and stuff like that for them.
Got it.
This is mainly due to the updated FEMA maps. So, FEMA went through all Lake County and increased or decreased the base flood elevations in certain areas, which directly impacts flood insurance and areas like that. That also provides us an opportunity when there are grants, if we were part of this program, to be able to apply for those grants.
Thank you. So, with the updated map, and you talk about the grants, does that viaduct area, is that one of the areas that we can apply for grants?
You talking about over on One Seventy-Third?
Yes.
That grant has already been applied for. We have been approved for phase one within that.
Yes.
They are working on, SMC is working on acquiring phase two funding for that also.
Okay.
The drawings right now are sitting right around sixty percent complete for that. That would be a five million dollar grant from the state on that.
Okay.
For FEMA.
Yeah. Okay. I remember that now. Okay. All right. Any other questions? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Holmes?
Aye.
Commissioner Fireston?
Aye.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Mayor King.
Aye. Motion carries. Five zip. Item seven B, amending provisions of chapter eighty-two of the Zion Municipal Code regarding subdivisions for the City of Zion per Administrator Nabel.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. This is a change as it relates to the language in our code on impact fees. Back in the late nineties, early two thousands, when housing was booming in areas, large developments were going into a lot of communities, which put big strains on schools, parks, city for plowing, curbs, sidewalks, and impact fees were a way to help offset the impact of those developments coming into the community. There were additional charges for developers to, that went to the taxing bodies that were impacted by these developments. Obviously, things have slowed down significantly after two thousand and ten for development. However, our code still showed those impact fees on that. What we have had recently happen is we've had some subdivided plots that were done for potential developments in prior years, prior to the impact fees, that now impact fees are becoming restrictive for smaller developments of two, three, four houses, you know, five to ten houses, where that cost of those impact fees actually makes it economically kind of detrimental to go, move forward. The cost isn't beneficial for what they can get for the housing and building those housings. And obviously, we don't want to deter development. So, we looked at our code, and there was a definition in there of subdivision minor, which covers subdivisions of five acres or less. The impact fee did not have any exemptions for size of developments. We thought that we'd like to clean that up and say, impact fees are not subject for subdivision minor classification, so five acres or less, so that those smaller developments could happen, additional new housing could happen, stuff that isn't going to impact the taxing body significantly, but we can move forward with. So, this text amendment changes that to say, but that impact fee language is not applied for developments of five acres or under, so that we can, again, move forward with development within the city where we can get in.
Okay. Do we have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Fireston?
Second.
Second by McDowell. Questions or comments before we vote?
Just one question regarding the language. So, on the summary, we call them impact fees, but in the ordinance, we're referring to it as all donations, capital contributions, and dedications. Any particular reason on those three categories, the way it's worded?
Impact fees is kind of an umbrella for capital donations. The language, the language in the code talks about donations of land as a possible offset to impact the cash contributions and that. So, this just covers all the language that's used within the code.
Got it. Thank you.
All right. Any additional questions? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Holmes?
Aye.
Commissioner Fireston?
Aye.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Mayor King.
Aye. Motion carries. Five zip. Item number seven C, extending a special use permit for a two-point-five-megawatt direct current, two-megawatt alternate current, fixed tilt ground-mounted community solar project per Administrator Nabel. Don't ask me to read that again.
Thank you again, Mayor Commissioners. This is a project that's been on the works for probably three or four years now. We were approached to put a solar panel project on Old Landville off Seventeenth Street. It was subject to funding from the state as they were putting money towards solar, but it was a lottery system. So, the developers that, Synergy was the name of the developers, came to us. They were four-hundred-and-thirty-fifth out of like six-hundred on the lottery, and with the amount of projects the state was funding every year, they decided to go a different path on the community solar project, which actually benefits the city more, requires them to be greater partners with the city, provide contributions back to the city. And a lot of companies weren't going that route, which made the line for approval much shorter. So, while they were going through that process, we had to keep extending the special use permit as it relates to the project. They finally got notice that they were approved, or it's happening, we've been working with them on leased language that will be coming to council shortly. But in the meantime, the current special use permit is set to expire, so we're recommending approval of, or extension of the special use permit as presented.
All right. Do we have a motion?
I'll make the motion to extend the use permit.
Motion by Fisher?
Second.
And second by Fireston. Any questions or comments? All right. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Holmes?
Aye.
Commissioner Fireston?
Aye.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Mayor King.
Aye. Item number eight, request approval of hotel motel tax grant application for GTP Enterprises per Administrator Nabel.
Thank you again, Mayor Commissioners. GPT Enterprises LLC, which is more commonly known as Dungeon of Doom, and the Edge of Escape Rooms, approached us probably almost ten years ago now to acquire a building within town and have a permanent location here in Zion for their events. They have, along with many others, been beneficiary of a program that we've implemented to encourage tourism in overnight stages through our hotel motel tax fund, up to a maximum of ten thousand dollars a year. And they have been a prime example of why we put that program together. They spend over a hundred thousand dollars a year on marketing and promotion all throughout Wisconsin and Chicago, bringing thousands and thousands of tourists to the area for their event. Businesses in town, Culvers, other restaurants, hotels have, that we've talked to, have seen definite spikes in business during those times. So, it's been a good example of how the program intended to work. As you see, they submitted their application, and Sonalita Bronson, American Development Coordinator myself, we go through a scoring process, reviewing that application. Based on that application, we recommend approval of ten thousand dollars requested for marketing and promotion of their events.
All right. Is there a motion?
I'll move to approve the grant of ten thousand dollars for GPT Enterprises.
Motion by Fisher?
Second.
Second by Holmes. Questions or comments? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Holmes?
Aye.
Commissioner Fireston?
Aye.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Mayor King.
Aye. Item eight B, consider waiving managers fidelity bond raffle application requirement Zinnia Monarch Festival per Administrator Nabel.
Last time you let me ramble for that. So...
Do a good job of it.
So, the Monarch Butterfly in Zinnia Festival event is doing a raffle. Per our code, they have to get a bond for any, not just them, but anyone who conducts a raffle within the community has to get a bond. We use this as kind of oversight for protection of the residents and anyone that participates in that, kind of an insurance policy that they don't, you know, run away with the money, that they're on the up and up. We obviously are aware of who's running the festival, so it's kind of a formality, but it does give us the oversight of that. We don't have any concerns with the risks that go with waiving of that, so I recommend waiver of the bond as requested.
All right. We have a motion to waive the manager's fidelity bond raffle application. So, move. So, move by Fireston?
Second.
Second by McDowell. Questions or comments? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Holmes?
Aye.
Commissioner Fireston?
Aye.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Five zip. Item number nine is departmental comment. Director Iain says he's not here, so we'll start off with Director Roberts.
Thank you, sir. Last meeting, council approved the bid programs for the sidewalk program and the HMA street patching. Contracts have been signed on that, and we are working with the contractors now with scheduling. We're anticipating starting both programs second week in September.
All right. Thank you. And we've seen them all around the city doing patching, a lot of patching work and a lot of tree trimming. And I've gotten a lot of comments from visitors during our celebration at the Park District for Independence Day, how much, how the city looks great for residents that have, and visitors that have come in that were residents from many years ago. So, thank you to your crew for what they do to make our city look good.
Thanks, sir.
Chief Street?
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. Just one thing tonight, it's not September yet, I realize that, but it's close enough to talk about September being Fall Prevention Month. We're going to put some data on our Facebook page at some point in the next week. We were on at least five fall calls, calls for falls, say that five times fast, yesterday alone. So, it's one of our most common types of ambulance calls that we go on, is falls and injuries because of those. So, we just hope that our residents will take Fall Prevention Month seriously, do a little bit of research on some ways they can help themselves around their homes, and be a little safer for themselves. So, that's all I had to bring up tonight.
All right. Chief Street, thank you. Chief Barton?
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. I just wanted to, a couple things real quick. A nice shout-out to Razabazzles for their competition success. We just escorted them back again and are, again, I don't know if this is the third time, world champion? Second time?
Two times consecutive, back-to-back.
Yep. So, that was, that's really pretty cool. And then I just wanted to highlight some, some stuff that you may have seen. I was actually stopped in Costco by a citizen that lives here in town while I was shopping, asking some questions about some of the direct enforcement action that they have seen our officers in the process of. So, just as a, you'll see, sometimes you'll see some of our officers out there in a little bit more enforcement role. And just as a kind of a recap of the last week or so, we've gotten one assault rifle, multiple handguns, and then the importance of the community involvement in notifying us couldn't have been exemplified even more than today when a citizen called and said, hey, there's something weird right here. We responded and took a person in custody that was in a stolen car and was related to multiple thefts in other towns for ammunition being stolen. So, we can't do it without you, but if you see us out or if you see the officers out, that's what they may be involved with, but those things have been fruitful, and we appreciate the hard work that the men on the Zion Police Department have been doing.
Chief, we were having a conversation, I want to say a little bit, probably about a week or so ago, when you talked about crime has decreased from last year about ten percent. Can you tell us a little bit about what has led to that?
Oh, gosh. To be honest with you, I don't really know what, what one thing it is, but we've changed so much over the last year. We rely heavily on technology, we've used Glock and gunshot detection. We've really worked hard on networking with other agencies and creating instant communications between the areas of northern Illinois, or Lake County specifically, and Genoche County. And then we bolstered our staffing through this council's approval of the cops grant with five additional officers, and that's, we've seen a lot of, we've actually started to see some of those officers return now from the academy through the training process, so we're ramping up those positions that are, as they might say, the tip of the spear where we're going after the individuals that are responsible for violent crime within our community. So, that, that five officer increase has led to the development in, of our street crimes unit, and so now we have supervision down there. We have a couple more detectives assigned to that. So, to answer your question, I don't know if it's one, one specific thing, but we've kind of launched the O-Lot blitz on multiple facets, and, but we are seeing results. We've, we've had direct supervision deployment to our districts. Our officers are responsible for certain things. You'll see in the coming weeks that there will be a kind of a question-answer with our district sergeants, the responsible for setting up a meeting within their district and having community participate in that, and that's being done. You'll see that on our website and on our Facebook page. So, there's just a lot of push to hear the community, what the community needs and wants and how they want it, and just getting after it. Back to policing.
Yeah. The last thing I, I want... Yeah, the last thing I I want to say about this, and thank you for answering that, is just, it's so crucial for us in our police department. We've asked for many years, I know since I've been back, to get help from our residents. And they can do it anonymously in being able to help our police department, be able to resolve some of the issues within our community and the crimes that are committed. So thank you for the outreach that the officers do, just by getting out more and being more interactive with our residents as well. All right, Director Conway, let's hear about that money.
Still coming in, still going out.
All right.
I just wanted to give you an update. You had brought up trying to match residents who get a water bill who might not have gotten their vehicle sticker. So we've started the process of trying to kind of download stuff from the vehicle sticker kind of database and try to match it up with the water. It's going to take some time, but I think we could come up with a plan, maybe some letters to send out for the people who are getting a water bill and never came in and got a sticker. So we are working on that.
All right. And one of the things with our city stickers, some people might not are opposed to them, but the thing that helps with it, it helps with our infrastructure in the city. And, you know, we had a new infrastructure bill by President Biden's administration, but we still try to do a lot locally to make our streets passable. And everyone uses them to go everywhere. When things happen with our first responders, you want your roads in good shape so that it can be there. When there's flooding, as we've had, had an inordinate amount of rain throughout the United States this year, it's important that you're able to get to to and from work, to and from your leisure activities, and also for our first responders to be able to get there to be able to help you out. So thank you for doing that research. I know it's a a lot of work, and we're trying to bring in some outside assistance indirectly to be able to help you with that task. So thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Administrator Naval, have you said enough tonight?
You'd think so. I wanted to give an update on the CGA grant that we got as it relates to the nuclear funding. For those that aren't aware, the community was included as part of, Zion specifically was included as part of the CGA Act from the state to get about $14.2 million a year for the next 23 years as a result of being a basically a nuclear storage site for all the waste from the decommissioned plant. It was a much, probably 11 years worth of effort to get to that point federally and at the state level. But we got that got that bill through, and then DCEO, Department of Commerce and Economic Opportunity, put together the application requirements for all of the taxing bodies to apply for their share of the funding. We've been working closely with the staff of all the other taxing bodies and making sure that we have a joint effort on how we apply for those funds and how we utilize those throughout to the community to best benefit. The the issues, like you said, infrastructure, services, and also taxes. It's been a long process, but we just got an update from them, from DCEO last week stating that it's at the director level, all of our applications are at the director level for review, and they should be releasing award notifications over the next couple of weeks. We all have put that in our budgets this year. We were guaranteed the funding. We're always a little skeptical because of the timing of spending the funds versus when we get it reimbursed. Makes us all a little nervous, but we we got assurances from them, and it was all part of our budgets. But it's moving forward pretty quickly for all things considered at the state level, and it's and it's it's going to happen. So we're still working on fine tuning a lot of the uses, the terms that DCEO put in there and what we can use it for to make sure all the taxing bodies have the opportunity to use it how we see it best with based on the needs of our community versus what they determine we might need to use it for. But that'll be fine tuned over years. But the news that it's at the approval level.
Terrific news. And again, thank you for all the work that you've done on that. It's been heavy lifting. We've been, our our city was left in a really bad state when the nuclear plant closed. We lost a lot of our tax, percentage of our property taxes. And the federal government through the 1982 Nuclear Waste Act was supposed to be giving us that money per year. We are still working hard behind the scenes to get the money from the federal government as well. But I give kudos to our state reps, Sam Yingling, Joyce Mason, who worked hard with us, and the rest of the state reps out of Lake County, that once ComEd was looking for a bailout. They said, if Zion, Illinois doesn't get a bailout, ComEd doesn't get a bailout. They stuck together so that we could get this funding that will help us restart our community. So a big thank you to them for all that they've done. And Mary Lou?
I just would ask if David could tell us what CGA is?
It's the Climate Equitable Jobs Act. Basically, it's a filter through of a lot of the infrastructure funding.
Clean Energy Job Act.
Clean Energy Job Act.
We get to do so many acronyms.
Yeah.
Yeah, you rattled those off, and I'm saying.
Yeah. And Melinda Bush, our state senator, was very involved with it as well before she decided to take a different path. So we've we've had great, we've had great support from our our state elected officials in working with us, which is which is great. It's something that we had wanted to do as we started this administration almost five years ago. It was important for us to do that. So thanks, Dave. Thanks for the update. Commissioner McDowell?
Yeah, I just want to add to what Chief Barton said, because I think you forgot an important piece of the police department, and that is his own administration. I think that in answer to your question, what's the reason for the drop in crime, I think the organization that we see in the police department, led by Chief Barton, has made a huge difference. And we can always have more personnel. I think we'd be, you know, if we had more, it'd be better. But we have strategic people in key positions in command staff, and I attribute that to Chief Barton. So thank you. And I also just want to say something about a tradition that we have in Zion. In addition to our Labor Day parade, we also have the Mayor's Prayer Breakfast, which now is in its 55th year. And there there might have been other times when when we didn't host a Mayor's Prayer Breakfast, but I can't remember any except for these COVID years, two years. So if you take away those COVID years, this would be the 55th year for hosting the Mayor's Prayer Breakfast. And I'm very glad for your support, Mayor, for that breakfast. And you'll be giving some remarks at at that event. And that's going to be on Labor Day at the high school at 8:00 AM. Mayor's Prayer Breakfast, you're all invited.
Always a good turnout. We have a lot of elected officials from Lake County, usually other mayors, North Chicago, Mayor Rockingham usually attends, Mayor Bruno from Winthrop Harbor, Mayor Hucker from Winthrop, excuse me, from Beach Park, and also Mayor Ryback from Watchword typically attends this. And a lot of our state.
Saw Mayor Taylor last year, too. We expect her to be there again this year, too.
Yeah. So nice turnout at the high school, and food will be served and a good time just to celebrate all together.
I'll add to Commissioner McDowell and Chief Barton. I think the the role that the deputy chief is playing in getting things out onto the social media, I think that goes a long way with building trust and communicating with with the public. That's something that folks have been asking for for a long time. So I think that's another big thing that extends and bring people in, people feel informed. They know that the police are there and on their side and doing their job. And I think it's, it goes a long way, I think, for people to be able to be a part of that. So keep up the great work. Thank you, Mayor, for the shout out. We did have our golf outing for the Coalition for Healthy Communities. It was a great event. Lot of sole sponsors, some corporate sponsors from the area. I think we had about 48 golfers that day. The weather held up. So I just thank you all for the support and all those who sponsored.
Yeah, and our goal next year is to double, 48 golfers to 96. It's a great event, and all the money goes to help our high school students or students in the area with different things, whether there are field trips that we try to get young kids out of the community so that they can experience some activities outside of Zion. And for all of the adults that have been here that have gone to different places, you understand and learn that you pick up different things from different communities. And it gives you aspirations because you see things outside of your community, maybe that don't exist, that you could get a curiosity about some of the good things. And I know that helped me as I was growing up in organizations like the Coalition for Healthy Community, the Park District. Always just take us to Cubs and White Sox games. And being able to go to those events as a young man and go to Wrigley Field was a big part of my upbringing. So thanks for the work you do as the president, and we're going to double that amount next year.
Glad to hear.
Conway, I'm taking lessons to golf, so next year.
You got a four.
The same. The same, sir.
Golf is a fun and frustrating game. Yeah. Well, you've got gray. I don't have anything. That tells you what kind of effect it has. All right, Commissioner Holmes?
I just wanted to say, this is my first term in terms of being a commissioner over Department of Public Works. But I wanted to say a special thank you to Director Roberts. I know you don't like to be put on the spot, but for the many challenges that the Public Works Department has, I'm truly amazed at what you do. And I just wanted to say thank you very much.
Speech, Ray.
I was eyeballing the chief earlier laughing at him.
Yeah, karma. Remember karma, as they say. All right, Commissioner Fisher?
Actually, what I'd like to do, this is a question that Mr. Premerner was asking. Is there going to, additional communications on the pickup, the trash pickup changes that are coming in September? Is there anything, are we mailing out notices? Are, is Waste Management handling that? Where are we at with that right now?
We actually have a meeting with them Thursday.
Okay.
To go over the final documentation. We're, we have a FAQ put together for a lot of the questions that we're going to be really pushing out here. Waste Management is going to be sending out flyers with that information, I believe, next week. That's what we're confirming.
Okay.
Then there'll be a social media blitz campaign, probably be using Blackboard. If you haven't signed up for Blackboard, that's a both emergency and non-emergency contact from the city through email, text, or call. We'll be utilizing that. And then they'll also be hanging cart hangers on every cart the week before this goes into effect, letting people know some general information. So everyone will get a, something in their mail, everyone will get something on their cart, and we'll also be putting it out through various social media and electronic means over the next few weeks. We were kind of waiting for that couple of weeks before implementation because you do it too early, people forget about it, and to make sure everything's finalized and that we have all the questions that we can address. We know it's going to be a learning curve, and it's going to be a difficult transition. We're hoping it's a, while painful, it's a quick one. Once you go through a week of not for, of not remembering to put your garbage out front, and it doesn't get picked up, you remember that for the next week. But we know we'll be ironing out some things as as this transition happens that we didn't anticipate as well.
And those communications will be in English and in Spanish, correct?
Yes.
Thank you very much. That's all I got.
All right. And speaking of Blackboard, Chief Street, thank you for giving me that information to be able to put out on social media about Blackboard. If any of you in here have not signed up for it, you can go to our city page and go to Blackboard, put your phone number, email address, or any kind of emergencies or community events that are happening. We will send you information, and we'll probably be using the Blackboard to send out this change in the garbage service. It's a great service. What we found is some of the numbers that are on there have been changed, so people need to update their numbers. So I'm in conjunction with the notices of putting out the new garbage information, we will also put out some more information to try to get our residents to sign up for Blackboard, which is a great service. My comments are, I'll try to be very brief, as Cheryl looks at me, I like that. She said, be sincere, be brief, and be seated. I just want to go over some of the things that have happened in our community in the last couple of weeks that have just been absolutely fantastic for us as a community. We had our sixth annual cleanup day, and Director Ians is not here, but I think we filled over 10 different containers of tires and electronics and debris that people brought out. And we have been looking at trying to create a second day in the fall for our residents to be able to get rid of things that are in their yards. Our building department and our community service crew did a great job of going around the city and getting things out of the alleyways. And as a result of that, when we had our celebration at the Park District, I can't tell you how many people came up to me that were visitors and residents. Some were residents that have come back for a while and saying they didn't know what to expect when they came back to Zion, because they get some of the news feeds when they're on the West Coast. And all the news sometimes out of here isn't good, which is very deceiving. But this particular resident that I was talking to said he was surprised and just elated with how the town looks. And I credit that to the programs that we put in that have helped our our marketing with our properties. Our property values have increased. We've got more homeownership, and people are taking care of their properties more. So Building Department, Public Works, again, for what you do, thank you for making our city looks, look great. We don't have to have a whole lot, but my mother always used to say, whatever you have, outlet you have, take care of it. And we are, we are definitely trying to do this. The celebration, Fourth of July celebration with Bella Kane and the concert, another great event where our residents and people from surrounding communities came out and had a great time at the Park District. Food vendors were there. There was plenty of food, plenty of just people talking to neighbors and getting to get out after two years of being locked up. And it reminds me again, I say this frequently, of times that we had in Zion as a young kid where everybody came out from the community and had a good time without any incidents whatsoever. So thanks for our first responders and our residents for coming out and making it such a great social event. Last week, Chief Barton and I had an opportunity to give a tour to the new District Six teachers that came in. There were two buses, and we led a tour throughout the town, which was great. And we answered questions to some of the teachers that came in. We had two young teachers coming in from Spain, Barcelona and Sevilla, that were really impressed with our our city. But the other teachers that were there, they kept remarking as we went around town what a beautiful town we had. And we we started the journey out at the Illinois Beach State Park. And you have lunch down there, it's such a beautiful view. But that was really good for us to be able to connect with the new teachers and our continued connection with the other taxing bodies and being able to let them know we are here and we are working together to put the best foot forward on our town. We also did the same thing with District Six, 126. In fact, their bus stopped by my house when I was out being walked by my dog. And I happened to have on my ZB hat and my ZB T-shirt. And they put a video together, which I'm going to try to get from them, they're going to send to me. And they did just a quick little montage of the great things in Zion, the lake. They went through the different neighborhoods and talked about some of the hotspots in town. And it was a great video. And I think it's one of those things we need to put out a little bit more so people can see, we've got a nice gem here. And it's a diamond in the rough that we keep polishing. And thank you all, the city employees, for your efforts in in polishing this diamond that we have. There at a Zion for Life reunion where a bunch of residents came back, it was classes from the 50s through the 2000s that met down at the Illinois Beach State Park, picnic out at Van Patton Woods, and everybody enjoyed being back in Zion. And everybody has a lot of pride in this town, and they remember it for all the great things that it brought us, being in a great place between, located between two metropolitan cities, where we're sheltered from some things, but we have access to the things that we want if we want to go and have upscale meals in Milwaukee or Chicago, if we want to come to have nice to have nice meals here. We've got plenty of restaurants coming in here as well. Also, the community barbecue with the Amadea Muslim community over the weekend, Sunday. I had three picnics to go to that day. The police department picnic, the Zion for Life, and also the Moose Lodge had their corn roast. So it was a busy weekend, but a lot of community activities. Last but not least, the Razzle Dazzle, their second world championship. They came back from Liverpool, England, and they had a big reception at the high school. I put it out on Facebook, just took video of everybody waiting, the chants, the buses, and the enthusiasm for these young ladies that now are the best in the world from Zion, Illinois, and there's a lot of great things that happen here and a lot of great community support. So I'm just really proud to be the mayor of this town. I am really proud of the people that I work with, the city employees that I talk with every day, when I see them on the streets, in the building, and the commissioners for everything that you do to help make everybody's job easier, to make our town a great place to live, place to work. I could never thank you enough for your, for your efforts and what you're doing, and what we're all doing with different organizations outside of our roles as commissioners. So thank you. With that, the announcement, September 4th, the city offices are closed for the holiday Labor Day. We have the Mayor's Prayer Breakfast that starts at 8:00 at Zion Bitten Township High School, the Horizon Campus, followed by our Labor Day Parade, which people have been excited about having back after two years of, of closure due to COVID. So bring your chairs out, there will be food vendors there, all the commissioners will be there, all the state reps will come in. I'm sure our governor or lieutenant governor will come in. They always come into our Labor Day Parade. We've got the best downtown in the area, so come out and enjoy Labor Day. And on September 5th, 7:00 PM, we have a Zion City Council meeting. And item number 11, before Cheryl shoots me one of those daggers where they look, she reminds me of my mom sometimes. All she got to do is give me that, cut your eye sideways. Item number 11, is there a motion to adjourn?
No move.
All right, motion by Fireston?
Second.
Second by Holmes. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Holmes?
Aye.
Commissioner Fireston?
Aye.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
All right, motion carries five zip.